Ladies and gentlemen, to call the meeting to order, welcome everybody and Happy New Year. It's always a pleasure to see you everybody. If you would please stand and join me in invocation in the Pledge of Allegiance. Lord, as we enter into this new year, we are reminded that each new beginning is a time of both sadness and opportunity. Each new year is profoundly sad as we remember the loved ones lost during the year. The memories of our deceased family members, friends, and neighbors remind us that our time here is precious and always too short. But new years also bring us hope for the opportunities to come. We ask your help in meeting these new challenges and making our city an even more amazing place to live in the future. Grant us wisdom, compassion, and teamwork to address the challenges that lie ahead and to build upon the legacy of those who came before us. And although we are of many ethnicities, creeds, and backgrounds, we ask all of this as one people united in friendship. Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to remind everybody to please silence your electronic devices. And if you'll recall from our last meeting, Councilmember Fernandez made a really kind of a neat suggestion that we would include a interesting or fun or historical fact about our city kind of at the beginning of each meeting. It doesn't have to be long, but something that just to kind of talk about our past and some of the things that make our city an interesting place to be. And so I thought we'd pass this duty around, but I'll kick it off tonight if that's okay with everybody. So as I think probably everybody watching knows, unless you're new here, our story typically starts with the purchase of the property around what later became Temple Terrace by a Chicago socialite woman named Bertha Palmer, whose picture here is depicted in the gallery. But there's actually some history before even that. And in the pre-Civil War days, it was very common for families to migrate from Georgia into Florida and particularly Hillsborough County. That was a typical migration pattern of the day. And one such family that did that was was a family named the Branch family, just like the tree, the Branch family. And in 1885, a fellow by the name of Samuel Branch and his minor son, Belford, were granted 160 acres of land here. Now, I don't know exactly where the boundaries were because I haven't been able to find a map, but I do know that their homestead was near what is now Dewey's Liquors on Bush Boulevard. So I don't know exactly where the home stood, but it was somewhere close to where Dewey's Liquors is at Bush and Overlook. And so one of the interesting things about this is when Bertha Palmer came to town 15, 20 years later and started buying up properties, right? The Branch family had 160 acres. Bertha Palmer eventually acquired 19,000 acres. So the Branch homestead was only a very small portion of this. But she did what Walt Disney did about 50 years or so later on, was she bought these tracts of land under different corporations and different names to quietly amass what later became ultimately about 30 square miles of Hillsborough County without anybody realizing what she was doing. And by the time they realized what she was doing, she had 30 square miles of Hillsborough County. And obviously, a portion of that became the hunting preserve, which later was sold after her death. And then the story of Temple Terrace really begins two owners after Bertha Palmer. So although we attribute the founding to Bertha Palmer, it's not really when the actual city began. And if you want to hear that story, you have to come back to future council meetings. Thank you, Councilman Fernandez, for bringing that up. So I would like to announce to everybody that item 8E is going to be postponed this evening. That is the item that pertains to the subdivision plat application of Overlook Oak Estates, otherwise known as SP 22-03. When we get to that item, it will be opened, the hearing will be opened, but I will ask for a motion to postpone that. So if you are here strictly out of interest for that item, I don't want you to have to sit through the meeting for us to get to that. Okay? So has everybody had an opportunity to read the minutes? We have two sets of minutes. One is the regular council meeting from December 20th, and one is the special city council meeting of December 27th.
Move to approve minutes from December 20th. Second.
Any corrections to the minutes, Councilmember?
To the school board meeting minutes.
That's the next one. This one is for the council. Any corrections or amendments to the December 20 minutes? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Councilmember Fernandez, would you like to make a motion, including your comments or revisions?
Yes, I will move to approve the minutes from the special meeting regarding school district boundaries. But the only thing I want to change, well, we can wait till there's a second.
Okay, there's a motion to approve in a second.
Okay, so the only thing that I want to change is on page three. When I was talking about the IB, and yes, if it is a magnet, then everybody has to apply, but the school board isn't aggressively pursuing, they're not going to make Greco an IB magnet. So they're talking about making it an IB school, residents would still be zoned to it. But if it was a magnet, it would be bad, but they're not aggressively pursuing the IB process.
Is this an addition?
No, it's a just correction. So what it says in here is that if it is to be a magnet school, then everyone has to apply, which is true. A student cannot be zoned for the school, which is not good for city residents. However, the school board isn't aggressively pursuing it. They're not aggressively pursuing the magnet program, they're not aggressively pursuing the IB program. So it's a difference. It's a clarification. IB, you can have an IB school without being a magnet. IB is a teaching structure. And magnet is a zoning and attendance issue. So that's all.
I understand the distinction. Is the clerk, are you sufficiently clear?
Okay.
Yeah, but.
To make sure it's. Just where in that paragraph it says, however, the school board isn't aggressively pursuing it, that makes it sound like they're not pursuing the magnet program, but it's the IB program.
Okay, so I'll just change it from magnet to IB program.
Or you can change the it to IB program.
Okay, got it.
Okay, motion second. Corrections, the clerk's adequately clear on? You got it?
There's an issue at home where they don't have any sound, so Lori went upstairs to work on that, just to let you guys know.
Okay, well, we're not going to suspend the meeting, so. Okay, any other comments about the meeting minutes of the December 27th meeting? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? No nays, minutes are adopted. Next item, persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda. There are forms in the back of the room for any members of the public who wish to address councils.
So they wanted to speak on number 11 or 5?
I don't know what that is.
It's the City Manager's section.
Okay, well, there's no public comment on section, the City Manager's report, so if there's members of the public to speak now, it would be now, unless it's on an item that we're going to call up. So I don't know. If it's, well, I think I have somebody ahead of you. I have Jan Tumbelson first, and then, yeah, the way we typically do it, if it's an item that we're going to call up, I'll ask for public comment on that item. But if it's an item that's just general in nature and is not on the agenda, then this would be the time. Good evening, Ms. Tumbelson.
Good evening. Jan Tumbelson, resident of City of Temple Terrace. First of all, Happy New Year. Thank you for all being here. I appreciate it. Okay, the Vice Mayor brought up something regarding Heartline is going to be upgraded in March, which was very good, and I appreciate all that information. Okay, the special meeting for the school board was great. Thank you for doing that. Okay, option two was the best thing. I hope that the Hillsborough County School Board will take it into fact. Okay. And I want to brag about the Centennial Celebrations. I thank everybody who's working on that and is taking time and a lot of effort. So thank you very much. Okay. Also, USF, Moffitt, Advent are all very important to City of Temple Terrace. Okay, USF has a lot of people that have worked there, been professors there, students there. And so any connection, okay, there's a mountain of people in the City of Temple Terrace that will help you with the President of Rena Law. And also, there's a lot of people in the Women's Club and all the alumni for USF. So I appreciate anything y'all can do with that, and I thank you, and have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tumbelson. So I have, I think anyway, would you guys like to speak at this point? Okay. And whoever would like to go first? We have a request from Marilyn Smalley and one from William Smalley. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you. William Smalley, 7822 River Ridge Drive here in Temple Terrace. It's my understanding that City Manager will, in general terms, be discussing briefly, I think, the Hillsborough River Preserve now under the auspices, sort of, of the Swamp Mountain Bike Club. Yeah, I know, we've all done this before, but we're going to do it again briefly. We were promised that they were repurposing trails and that they would increase the hiking trails. And they even gave us a map, which all of you probably have seen before, but I'm somebody that goes out there every day, sometimes twice a day, cleans up and hikes all these trails. And I have to tell you that they're not being straight with any of us, particularly you folks. They said that these proposed trails would be added for our benefit, for the hikers. This trail goes nowhere. You can't build a trail there because it's two feet underwater. We don't have more trails for hikers, we have less trails because of what the bike club's doing to the preserve. The other trail that was taken from us, my wife will speak about briefly. The fact that they're taking trails from us and we're not getting anything out of it concerns me. One of my other concerns is that has the EPC seen any of the matters that they're doing to our preserve? They have an interest in it, and I don't know if they have gone out there and looked at it or not. One of the other matters that I had some anxiety over, maybe it's because I'm an attorney, I tried to contact the insurance company allegedly hired by the City of Temple Terrace to insure this area, and was told that it's a German company. I don't have the name, it's in with my other notes, but I tried to look up either an adjuster or a claims department with the insurance company that's supposedly insuring this preserve, only to find out that they don't have any adjusters or claims departments in Florida or in the United States. Making a claim against them would be somewhat difficult. What was once a hiking preserve is now an unsightly bike club's amusement park and has driven out all the wildlife there. And I would also ask whoever's in charge of this matter, when is somebody from the Florida Community Trust or the EPC going to go to the preserve and see what they're doing? My wife and I have provided, I think, all of you with photographs showing what's going on out there.
Mrs. Smalley?
Yes, Marilyn Smalley, also 7822 River Ridge Drive. I was hiking today, same map. The red map on the bottom is supposed to be the bikers. I mean, I can bring it closer if that helps you. That's supposed to be what the bike trail is. There's dozens and dozens of little sub-things now. It looks nothing like the map that they provided us. So I was out on my nature walk, and I was heading west. I got to the intersection where I could go to the river, and I said, no, let me see this new path that we have been given so graciously by the bike club from St. Petersburg. I walked along the plastic fence, which is really not walking along a nature preserve, and then I walked along the chain link fence, and I was almost hit by someone on a bicycle. He was a member of the club. And he said that all the trenches I was seeing, pictures have been sent, I believe, to Mr. Bya. Of the pictures I took today. There are trenches all over the place, there are mounds of dirt that are piled on top of cut logs. It is nothing like these maps that we were provided with. I looked up a nature preserve. Nature preserve is a tract of land managed so as to preserve its flora, fauna, and physical features. We no longer have that in our nature preserve. I wanted to go west to the pavilion area so I could see what our path was supposed to be along the fence line, and that's when I bumped into this fellow on his bicycle. I'll go out with a trait measure, but I don't know how that bike path and my fence, there was no room for me. I asked him, I said, you guys are digging all these trenches? Oh, no, those are wild pigs. So then, of course, I did some research on pigs today, and they are rooters, so they're only going down to get the roots. So three-foot trenches are not what's going on. I was shocked by the bike trails, the pits, the trenches that provide the dirt for the hills and ramps and made by burying the logs. It is no longer a preserve, and I don't have a safe trail to walk in my preserve. I get to walk a fence line next to their bike trail. There is not a bike trail out to the pavilion. There are many that are all intersecting. I don't know what it's going to look like when it's done. When I was walking, there were bike tracks on my trail that I took from the parking lot west, and that's not supposed to be for bikes. And that is not safe for those of us that are hiking. It was never a good idea to have a mixture of the bike trails and the hiking trails. I didn't see my fox, my turkey, my armadillos, my gopher tortoise, because they're all in my neighborhood now because we took their habitat away. I hope that you will consider going out there and looking at what they're doing. Because, oh, and there's a sign that says, we see you. So I guess they have a camera to see me on my little hike where I was supposed to be, and I didn't trespass on their property.
Thank you, Mrs. Smalley. Are there other members of the public who wish to address the council? Okay. Next item is the first public hearing and first reading of ordinance 1541 relating to the rates. Thank you very much. Next item is approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? No nays, consent agenda is approved. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Now, next item is first public hearing and first reading of ordinance 1541 relating to the rates, fees, and charges for water irrigation and wastewater services. I'll open the public hearing. Finance Director Jim Ingram is here to explain.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Russ.
Good evening.
City Council. Tonight is the first hearing of an ordinance, ordinance 1541, of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending section 2256 of the City of Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances relating to the rates, fees, and charges for water irrigation and wastewater services. Staff recommends that City Council approve ordinance 1541 relating to the rates, fees, and charges for water irrigation and wastewater services on first reading, and schedule a public hearing and second reading of the ordinance for January 17, 2023. Chapter 166 of the Florida statutes, the legislator of the state of Florida confers upon local governments the authority to adopt regulations designed to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare of its citizenry. Chapter 180, 13, 2 authorizes the City Council to establish just and equitable rates or charges for the use of the utilities. Predetermined caps or on rate increases such as the U.S. Consumer Price Index may not be compatible with local economic conditions and/or fiscal demands of the city's utilities. This also does connect with our strategic council goal number four, which states support and enhance a high quality of life for the city's residents, businesses, and visitors by providing sustainable, environmentally sensitive, cost-effective infrastructure and services to promote public health, personal safety, transportation, economic growth, and civic vitality. And I will stand for any questions at this time.
Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Councilmember questions? Okay, if not, I'll close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending 22-56 of the City of Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances relating to the rates, fees, and charges for water irrigation and wastewater services, providing for applicability and severability, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion?
Move to approve ordinance 1541 as described on first reading.
Second. She beat you. Second by Councilmember Fernandez? Not by much, but by a little bit. Is there, are there comments on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No nays, ordinance is adopted on first reading. Will appear for a second reading and public hearing on Tuesday, January 17. Next item is the first public hearing and first reading of ordinance 1542 relating to the rates, fees, and charges for collection and disposal of solid waste and recyclables. I'll open the public hearing. Our Finance Director, Jim Ingram, is here to explain.
Thank you. If this sounds like a repeat, it virtually is, except for the fact that it's for solid waste, collection and disposal rates. 15, ordinance 1542 is an ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending section 2288 of the City of Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances relating to the rates, fees, and charges for the collection and disposal of solid waste and recyclables. It is recommended, staff recommends, that the City Council approve ordinance 1542 relating to the rates, fees, and charges for the collection and disposal of solid waste and recyclables on first reading, and schedule a public hearing and second reading for January 17, 2023. Chapter 166 of the Florida statutes, the legislator of the state of Florida confers upon local governments the authority to adopt regulations designed to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare of its citizenry. Chapter 180, 13, 2 authorizes the City Council to establish just and equitable rates or charges for the use of the utilities. Predetermined caps on rate increases such as the U.S. Consumer Price Index may not be compatible with local economic conditions and/or fiscal demands on the city's utilities. And again, this is in direct connection with our council goal number four, to support and enhance a high quality of life for the city's residents, residents, businesses, and visitors by providing sustainable, environmentally sensitive, cost-effective infrastructure and services to promote public health, personal safety, transportation, economic growth, and civic vitality. And I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Excuse me, are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Good evening, Ms. Tumbelson. Welcome back.
Thank you. Jan Tumbelson, city resident. Okay, I remember before Christmas or before the New Year, we had all sorts of information regarding the exact fees and how it was supposed to be done. Okay, I thought that we did it before Christmas that we talked about it, and it was, and they did a ordinance, a hearing. Okay, but this leaves out information that was provided last year regarding the water and sewer rates and how much they were going to go up. So I would like to see in the next hearing that that information is provided. Thank you.
Are there other members of the public who wish to comment? If not, for, let me just clarify for anybody else who's not aware of what's going on. This is a conversation that actually started in early summer when we were developing the budget. The ordinance as it currently is in Temple Terrace sets the limits. It caps how much annual increase can be increased on water or sanitation. And it's the lesser of one or two, and this is six months worth of conversation. We've discussed this for hours, so I don't want to rehash everything, but there's two options. It's a certain percentage, or it's the CPI, the Consumer Price Index for that year, as published by the federal government. And whichever of those is lesser is the most that the rates can be increased. The problem we're having with the economic conditions and realities of 2020, well, 2022 then, now 2023, the economic reality is, is that our fixed costs of providing water or dumping garbage have gone up more than what the ordinance have gone up more than what the ordinance would allow us to recapture. So in the case of garbage, we were actually going in the red every year. In the case of water, not sure we were going in the red. We were dangerously close, and we were not raising the money needed to do the capital projects that we need to do that are funded by the Water Fund. And in the case of sanitation, we were actually losing money. We're actually going in the red. And so the council during the budget realized that we can't raise the rates sufficiently to even break even, much less get this, keep this financially viable. So we set the budget. We created the budget, which took effect October 1, with an increase in the rates that reflected the minimum that we needed to do to keep these funds solvent. Due to an oversight or life or the changeover of city managers, I'm not sure what happened. But in any event, the ordinances were never revised. And so when the budget took effect on October 1, and we were about to raise the rates effective January 1, our Finance Director, to his credit, caught this and said, wait a minute, we can't raise these rates as much as we told the public we were going to because our own ordinance prohibits it. So the council got together in December and said, what are we going to do about this? The city manager presented a few options. The council decided to go with the option of not raising them at all, not raising the rates at all until we would get these, until we were able to get these ordinances revised. Once they're revised, then we will go forward with the previously announced rates. So the rate increases that were previously announced to the public have not changed. The only thing that's changed is the effective date was supposed to be January 1, and now it will be, I don't know, February, March. I don't know exactly when it will take. So that's the backstory of what's going on. And if, nobody's trying to not be transparent. It's just difficult to bring this six months of history into this whole conversation. So, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also to add to that, the actual resolution that included a lot of information that Ms. Tumbleson has mentioned will be on the next council agenda as well. So we'll have the second hearing for the ordinance, and subsequent to that, assuming the ordinance is passed, we'll have the resolution, which will have all that data for you.
Right. Right. After the ordinances are revised, then we'll pass a resolution to approve the rate increases. So, okay. Councilmembers, questions for Finance Director? If not, I'll close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending section 22-88 of the City of Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances relating to the rates, fees, and charges for the collection and disposal of solid waste and recyclables, providing for applicability and severability, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion?
Move to approve on first reading ordinance 1542. Second.
Motion, second discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No nays. Ordinance is approved on first reading, and will appear for a second reading and public hearing on Tuesday, January 17.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ingram. Next item is a resolution notifying Hillsborough County Public Schools, School Board of the Hillsborough County Public Schools and the School Board of the city council's position on the attendance boundary analysis. City Manager Carlos Paeza will explain.
Good evening again. The resolution that's in your packet on the agenda this evening should reflect, in our estimation, an accurate representation of the motion that was passed at the special meeting. Assuming the city council agrees and passes this resolution, it will be forwarded to the Hillsborough County School Superintendent and the School Board.
Good. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, councilmembers, any questions for City Manager? Councilmember Fernandez?
Well, it's not really a question. It's more an encouragement to ask all of our residents to, the school district will be holding meetings at various schools, and you can find their location and their times on the school district website. And I encourage everybody to get out to at least one meeting and look at the information that the school district is presenting. I know some people may say, oh, I don't have anybody at a Temple Terrace school, or my child won't be affected, they're grown, or what have you. But we're all taxpayers. We're all paying to the school district. So it is important for all, I think, for all the residents to know what the future plans might be and have a say in them. So I encourage everybody to do that.
Thank you. Are there questions for the city manager? Okay. If not, is there a motion?
Move to approve resolution on, notifying Hillsborough County Public Schools on the council position.
Second.
Motion, second discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No nays. Resolution is adopted. Thank you. Next is a resolution approving the facilities use agreement with Terrace Community Middle School. Leader Services Director Carl Langfield is here to explain.
Good evening, Mayor, and Council. Happy to hear you all. I'm here tonight requesting authorization for the city manager to execute an agreement between the city and Terrace Community Middle School for use of parks and recreation facilities for their extracurricular activities. Back in 1998, when TCMS first came into existence, their school was located in a strip mall on Fowler Avenue, just to the west of Gillette. When it came into existence, the school approached city council and requested permission to be able to utilize Parks and Recreation Facilities for its PE and extracurricular activities. At that time, that permission was provided. Since that time, Parks and Recreation has been providing space, soccer fields, gymnasium space, to Terrace Community Middle School under the same type of agreement that we have with the Hillsborough County Public School Cooperative Use Agreement, which allows for the school to utilize Parks and Recreation Facilities at the cost which we may incur for them being on our properties. That, that understanding has been in place since 1998. We've had a great relationship with TCMS. We thoroughly enjoy having them in our facilities and utilizing our spaces, and it's been a great relationship. Earlier this year, I set about looking for the actual agreement to see if there was a term to it, to see if there was an expiration date to it, to find the actual agreement. I couldn't come up with anything. We looked through council minutes to try and find it. We looked through prior resolutions to try and find it. We couldn't come up with anything in writing. So I worked with our legal department. I worked with representatives from Terrace Community School and created a use agreement that is loosely based on the existing agreement that we have with Hillsborough County Public Schools for the use of our facilities. And it just outlines the responsibilities each entity has for the continued use of our facilities. What I'm here tonight is requesting authorization for the city manager to approve that agreement. I stand for any questions you all may have.
Thank you, Mr. Langfield. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this? Seeing none, councilmember questions? Not really the time for discussion, just kind of question. Do we have any questions? Okay. Very good. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second. Now, discussion, councilmembers? Any discussion? Okay. If none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No nays. Resolution is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Langfield. Next item is a resolution approving a subdivision plat application, SP 22-03, for the plat of .63 acres of property to be known as Overlook Oaks Estate. And this is the item that I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting that is requested to be postponed until January 17. Councilmembers, we do need a motion. If that is acceptable to postpone this item to January 17.
Move to, move to approve, moving the item approving plat SP 22-03 till January 17.
Second. Motion, the second. Discussion on the motion? If not, those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No nays. The item is postponed until January 17. Next item is a resolution awarding Tupelo North Lift Station rehabilitation work to Danus Utilities Incorporated. Utilities Director Troy Tench is here to explain.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, Troy Tench, Utilities Director. I'm here this evening to seek approval for funding to rehabilitate the Tupelo North Lift Station. A little bit of information about that station itself. From what I could find, it was constructed in 1980. So it's well beyond its design life of approximately 20 years. In addition, I have a aerial map. If I could have the city clerk, thank you, pull that up. So what you see is it's located within the Temple Park subdivision, just outside of the city's limits. However, as you all know, our service area extends well beyond those, the city limits. So it is within our service area, and it is a lift station we are responsible for. To give you an idea of what that station looks like right now, it's a kind of a block structure. There's a garage-type door on the front. What we're proposing to do with that site is very similar to what we did with Lift Station SA, the master lift station located on Fowler. Because of the degradation of the building over time, we are proposing to pull that building down, raise that building to the ground. Then we will go in and of course remove all the old infrastructure inside there. We'll replace it with brand-new ductwork, new pipes. We'll put in new pumps, slightly larger than existing. We are going to be able to extend the wet well, which will give us a little bit of additional capacity within that particular lift station. And we will then put in a new panel, new electronics, an odor control system on that site, and then we'll be up and running from there. So we advertised this particular construction project in November of last year under invitation to bid number 22-009. We had four respondents on that invitation, the lowest bid of which coming from Danus Utilities, and of cost of $1,197,658.0. That said, staff recommend city council adopt the resolution authorizing the expenditure of $1,197,658.0 to Danus Utilities for the rehabilitation of the Tupelo North Lift Station. I would also like to note before I close, this was a budgeted item, and it did come in under the budget. I'll stand for questions if any.
Thank you, Mr. Tench. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this? Councilmember questions? Councilmember Abel?
You might have said this, but I might have missed it. Did you say the timeline for completion?
Well, with the extension that we're seeing with the lag in supplies, we would anticipate probably a full year to have this project completed. That's the construction window that we did provide to Danus.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
That was Vice Mayor.
Okay.
Councilmember Chambers?
Will the footprint of the new building be any larger than the current building?
We do not anticipate it to be any larger than the current structure outside.
Okay, and the last question, when, will the system be down in that area for a period of time? I mean, during the changeover, it has to be, but...
Right. So what they do is they bypass pump that. There'll be a bypass pump that is set up on-site. It will run. It will be like a quiet pack pump that we call. So there won't be a lot of noise associated with it. But when you're doing that changeover, yes, it will be on bypass, likely for several weeks, if not a month.
But they're not losing any service, and that's...
No, there will be no loss of service.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez?
For capacity purposes, will this actually expand capacity if we add? I know we already serving beyond our city boundaries, but will this provide the capacity that we need if we actually annex additional or extend our service boundary?
So this particular station only services Temple Park. It was built specific for the park itself. The park is built out. That subdivision is built out. But we will be adding capacity, oddly enough, to that station just by simply, right now it has like a basement facility, and we're raising everything to ground level. And when we do that, we're going to, in effect, increase the wet well size. So we're going to gain additional capacity in the system, but it's not necessarily needed. We just felt like it's always nice to have a little bit extra to help prevent sanitary sewer overflows and things of that nature.
Other questions, councilmembers? I have one. Mr. Tench, on these new, when we redo these, do these new electronics, the new control boards, do they have the ability to send an alert to a cell phone or to the police comm center if there's a failure? Because as I understand it now, if there's a failure, it automatically trips to the backup generator. But if the backup generator doesn't fire up, we don't know there's a problem until we have an overflow.
Yes. So a majority of our systems, and we are going, moving to have all of our systems on what they call, it's a crystal ball system. We may be evaluating changing that. But what that does is that it sends those alerts, what you're speaking of. So if the system goes down, we're alerted that there's either a loss of power on-site. It indicates if there are high water levels within the wet well itself. What it does not do, and it's important to know, is it does not control the station, which we do not want it to do for reasons that people could get a hold of that and do things they should not, shut the system down, shut our entire system down, and that could be catastrophic. So it does, it's an alert system. We are looking to expand that alert system this fiscal year and potentially even increase its viability to something maybe a little different than what we've been using. But yes, that system will be in place.
Okay. So let me make sure I understand what you said. It's, that system's going to be purchased for all of these facilities, or we're looking at doing that?
No, we already, it's already in place for a majority of our systems. There are only a few that don't have it. The system will be in place for this particular site.
Okay.
And we will be moving that system so it's all the 33 lift stations that we have in our inventory.
What's the timetable of getting that?
We would like to get that done this fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Is there a motion?
I move to approve a resolution awarding Tupelo North Lift Station rehabilitation to Danus Utilities.
Second.
Motion, the second. Discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays. Resolution is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Tench. Next item, also involving Mr. Tench, is a resolution approving miscellaneous professional services for general civil engineering.
So you, as you'll notice on the agenda, the next three items are actually, all have to do with this particular request for professional services, number 22-008. So what I would like to do is kind of talk about that particular proposal that was put together, how we went about reviewing it, how we reviewed the proposals that came in, and then touch on each of the particular items that would require a resolution individually so that we can follow proper rules of order. So late, about the middle of last year, myself and staff, specifically the city engineer, Brian McCarthy, worked really diligently to pull together a request for professional services. You may recall, or recall that we use this multiple times since I've been here. It's been in place actually since 93. So for the past 20 years, we've had those services available through these types of contracts. So the contract we had in place ended, and we advertised for the new one in September. We did receive 25 respondents to that particular proposal. We did do things a little bit differently this time, and that's why we have three separate resolutions that we're looking to approve. We split out the geotechnical services and the survey services into two separate areas, and we requested that firms that had those levels of expertise apply for those individually. And what this does in essence is, prior, we would have, we had a long list, and they developed teams. So they may not have that service in-house, but they would have someone outside another firm that would do the work, of course, and there was generally a markup before they would provide those services to us. So to kind of route around that process, we decided that it would be in our best interest to add a couple of additional services, and those were, of course, geotechnical engineering and survey and mapping. And we don't do a lot of geotechnical engineering. We do very little, but we felt it necessary to go ahead and put that out there. We do quite a bit of survey work, so we felt like that was something that we wanted to touch on. So again, 25 firms submitted. A handful of those firms were actually multidisciplinary firms. So that firm may have survey in-house. They may be a civil engineering firm, so they applied for both. We evaluated all 25. Unfortunately, six of those... Unfortunately, six of those firms that submitted proposals did not meet the qualifications of everything that was spelled out in that RPS. So we did have to, we did not review them as part of the process. They didn't fill out some forms and some other things that were required. This is something that's fairly commonplace within the industry. So that said, I would like to move into the first resolution, which is a resolution seeking to approve five firms for miscellaneous professional services related to general civil engineering. Again, we had 13 total firms that submitted on that particular package. We, as a group, did not meet individually. We held a public meeting, we scored everything one on, you know, by ourselves. We then met as a group in this very chambers, held a public meeting that was advertised, and we openly discussed our scoring of all the firms that were listed, and came up with five. Oddly enough, three of the five were firms that we all had in our top five, so that made it kind of easy. The remaining two firms were number two on our list, or were on two of our list of top five firms. So there were a couple of minor outliers, but for the most part, I thought the scoring went really well. The, the team was made up of the utility, Assistant Utility Director Nate Hale, the city engineer Brian McCarthy, and myself. So, it was, it was nice to see that we were all kind of looking for the same things and, and found things of a common nature. So, that said, staff recommends the City Council adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute contracts with Applied Sciences Consulting Incorporated, C.H.A. Consulting Incorporated, Johnson, Meran, and Thompson Incorporated, Metzger and Willard Incorporated, Vanas, Hagan, and Bristol Incorporated, to perform miscellaneous professional services for general engineering over an initial three-year period with the option of two one-year extensions. I'll stand for questions if any.
Thank you, Mr. Tench. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? If not, councilmember questions? Vice Mayor Schisler?
Yeah, Mr. Tench, uh, what? How are these companies, the individual companies used? Is it on a rotation basis? Is it, is it, you know, first come, first served? How do we, how do we assign the projects?
Initially, it will be on a rotation basis. And what we found previously was, there were certain firms that we found that we worked a little better with. I mean, we liked their pricing, the staff were easier to, to deal with, their products were more superior than others. So initially, we're going to start dulling out the pack, or the projects to all the firms to kind of get a feel. These are all brand-new to us. We, unfortunately, none of the incumbents were selected. So, we are going to have to get a feel for what these firms are like, how they work, what kind of pricing we can expect for them for design work, and how we kind of mesh as a team.
Do we have no minimums that we have to meet with any of these?
No, there's only maximums set by the C.C.N.A. $400,000 for design.
Okay, so then the other que, the other side of the question. Are there, are there any commonalities between the three contracts by the same company? In other words, is the same company on any one of the other three?
There are two companies that do have other services. One in particular that was selected in the engineering portion, J.M.T. They were also selected as one of our survey firms.
But we don't have any that do all three? No economies of scale?
None of them do all three.
Quantity discounts or anything like that?
Right.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And I felt it important to have at least one that had both services. So if we had a particular project that we knew would involve engineering and survey, we'd likely probably give it to that firm.
Which would we use the most of?
Which, we'll use the general civil by far the most. All of our design work, all of our lift station work, our waterline work, all of our sewer work, the re-lining programs, that's all general civil.
Other questions, councilmembers? How many, roughly, I'm not asking the exact, how many current projects do we have out there with our incumbent firms? I mean, we have 20, 50, five?
Yeah, we have probably, I'm just trying to do a quick, there are some that are continuing on. We have probably five or six that are still ongoing, and will likely be ongoing for the next year. For instance, C.P.H. is doing our building, and they're going to assist us with that first 35% phase. And that is going to run us through probably the most of next, or this year.
So, with our, I noticed that, I don't recognize any of the names, which doesn't mean that they're not good firms, but I'm used to seeing a lot of the same names.
Yes.
And I don't see any of them. So, did the incumbent firms not submit, or did they not meet our criteria?
They unfortunately did not meet the criteria. And, as you know, we've done a lot of work with several of those firms, and we were very sad.
Why didn't they, I mean, was there any particular area that was a problem?
Well, there were a set of forms that had to be filled out, and it was just a basic requirement, no different than having the proposal there by 2:30 on the 15th. And in our, in the private sector, that's commonplace, and they just simply did not fill out the forms. And so, we had to unfortunately not evaluate them.
Okay. Other questions, councilmembers? If not, is there a motion?
I've moved to approve the resolution approving miscellaneous professional services for general civil engineering.
Motion, and I, councilmember Chambers? Motion by Councilmember Abel, seconded by Councilmember Chambers. Is there discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No nays? Resolution is adopted. Next item is related, resolution approving miscellaneous professional services, this time for geotechnical engineering.
Good evening, Your Honorable Mayor, City Council, Troy Tench, Public Works Utilities Director, actually, sorry, Utilities Director. I'm here this evening to seek approval of four, or three firms for general, sorry, for general geotechnical engineering, engineering services. This is a resolution that corresponds to the RPS 22-008, which I just went into detail explaining. We did have three firms that submitted for this. We were looking to add three firms, so all three firms were selected under this process. Staff recommend City Council adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute contracts with Arena Engineering Incorporated, Professional Service Industries Incorporated, and Tierra Incorporated, to perform miscellaneous professional services for geotechnical engineering over an initial three-year period with the option of two one-year extensions. I'll stand for questions if any.
Thank you, Mr. Tench. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this? None, councilmember questions? Vice Mayor?
Are we going to, and this applies to all three, are we going to lose any, any progress? Or are we going to slide backwards in, in the transition for the old firms to the new ones?
There'll be an initial learning phase, but we're very confident in, in the firms that we selected. There are a number of them that have a great deal of experience, especially with water and wastewater. And so we're excited about that opportunity to get to work with these new firms. But, there will be a small learning curve, but again, no different than when I first came on board. If recall, that's when this contract initially began, the, the original, or the one prior, I should say. And so, within a very short period of time, we were up and running and moving right along.
Because we've got some time-sensitive projects out there, we just, I'd hate to, I'd hate to miss the mark on those.
I agree. Yeah, we weren't particularly happy that the firms were, that were incumbents were not eligible, trust me. But, rules were in place for a reason, and we felt it best to follow. If we had not, had we said, okay, well, we're going to waive that, the firms that did do everything according to the rules could have likely come forward, so.
Other questions, councilmembers? Okay, if not, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve resolution, approve, move to approve the miscellaneous professional services contracts for geotechnical engineering.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No nays? Resolution is adopted. That's a mouthful. You, you both stumbled on that one. Maybe the next one will be easier. Next is a, let's see. Resolution approving miscellaneous professional services for survey and mapping. Director Tench?
Thank you, Your Honorable Mayor. Maybe I need to put my glasses on, that might have been a problem. I'm here this evening to seek approval for three firms selected for miscellaneous professional services as they relate to survey and mapping. Again, this falls in line with the request for proposal, professional services 22-008. It is a corresponding resolution. Staff recommend City Council adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute contracts with Johnson, Meran, and Thompson Incorporated, Southeastern Surveying and Mapping Corporate, and Servtech Solutions Incorporated, to perform miscellaneous professional services for survey and mapping over an initial three-year period with the option of two one-year extensions.
Thank you, Mr. Tench. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Not councilmember questions? If there are no questions, is there a motion?
Move to approve the resolution for miscellaneous professional services for survey and mapping.
Second.
Motion is second by Councilmember Fernandez. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No nays? Resolution is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Tench. Any carryover council business from previous meetings? Vice Mayor Schisler?
Yeah, Mr. Tench, House Ferncliff. House Ferncliff.
You know, I'm actually going to have to get back with you on that, councilman. I'm not 100% sure where we are in that project. I know they were moving forward with the construction aspect. They should be out there. Design was completed. So, when we find out where we are with construction, I will certainly get back with you on that.
Other carryover council business? I have some new also, but new business in board reports, Councilmember Fernandez?
Well, I have a question for this, I guess, city manager, and that is, there is a road named Capwood that a portion of it, so that area was repaved. And most of the repaving, people seem happy with. But there's a portion of that road that seems a little rough. And I just wondered where we are, have, has anyone had a chance to look at it? Or is there something that we can do about that?
Thank you, councilmember. Actually, that was a, a problem that was encountered during the inspection of that initial paving. It wasn't done to the city's satisfaction, so the contractor is obligated to come back and do it. They have a, a larger section of paving that they're going to be doing over the next month, probably, imagine. And so, that's going to be included, so they repave that section that's rough right now. And at no extra cost to the city.
Other new business, Councilmember Abel?
It's a board report, are we on that?
Sure, same thing, same, yes.
So, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Committee had a proposal that they wanted me to share with you all. And I'll read it to you. It says, "The board recommended to the Temple Terrace City Council to identify lots within the city's borders which substantially lack foliage and tree cover in their front yards and inform the owners of the city's Adopt a Tree program with the goal being to increase the roadside shade coverage." I discussed this with the city manager to see what his take on it would be. And he had an interesting idea that I would, I'd like to turn it over to him to share with you all.
Thank you, councilmember. I think actually it's a great opportunity for us to revamp the Adopt a Tree program and really refreshing it and get, get the word out to the community. I've talked to Lori Hayes, our Public Information Officer, about updating the website, putting out new information on social media, and encouraging people in line with the Bike Ped Committee recommendations. Say, if you, if you're missing trees, for example, if you've got a tree canopy around you, but your front yard and the sidewalk area and the shoulder of the road is completely barren, this might be a really nice chance for you to get a, a tree from the city at no cost to you. And so that's what we'd like to do. We'd also reach out to the partners that were involved in the Adopt a Tree program initially. For example, the Rotary Club is one of the partners. And just gauge where they are as well, because this should be really more of a community effort, I think. Because I think it adds to the, the whole notion of us being a tree city. And so that seems to work well. I think Lori's on board, and we can get this out in, in short order.
So, just wanted to see if you all had any thoughts on that, and see if you had the approval to update the, the Tree City, sorry, the Tree Program, Adopt a Tree Program for the city.
Talking about, like, major revisions to it, or just kind of putting more emphasis on what we have?
I, I don't think necessarily major revisions. We just want to make sure that the, the program makes sense, the way it's structured. The original program had a stipulation in there that the city would install the trees, which I don't believe we're actually doing anymore. And, but there's information that's outdated on the website. So this is another chance for us to correct all that, clean it up, and make it more in line with what the advisory committee is actually recommending, in, in the spirit of that, at least.
Okay. Councilmember Fernandez?
A couple of questions. The first would be, is there any assistance with the homeowner as to what type of tree would be best planted in what location?
I believe so. City Arborist Joe Ferris actually typically, and if Mike can correct me, Mike, Community Development Director Mike Sherman can correct me, but I believe he goes out, and the Adopt a Tree program is part of that initiative to just make sure that the tree, because we want the tree to be, survive. Because it's an investment on the city's part as well, and the community's part. So, he typically will meet with the property owner, I believe, to suggest, look, you may want to consider this kind of tree here. Because there is a, a menu of trees that people can use, but some, not all the trees do well in all environments. So I think he would help with that.
Okay, and, and another question. This is more, actually for the city, and that is, some of the space that we're talking about not having a canopy, or maybe have lost some of the canopy, is, is public space. Do we have a, an organized plan that as some of our older trees are dying, and I'm talking about mostly the live oaks, as they are aging out, or maybe some of them have been damaged in storms? Do we have a plan where we are looking at going and helping to re-tree some areas? And, I mean, the golf course is an example, not, not, I'm not suggesting put oaks all over the golf course, but, you know, there are places that we've lost a lot of trees.
Yes, the, the answer to that is yes. So this goes back, this predates Mr. Baye. In fact, it predates Dr. Spin, Dr. Spinett too. It goes back to when Mr. Stevenson was here. We revised the ordinance that governs the tree fund, because the tree fund, partially because of Amazon, but because of other reasons. The tree fund, I don't want to say excess of funds, that people get the wrong idea. But it, it had ample funds compared to the number of trees that people were requesting. And so the fund was growing. And so we revised the ordinance, it had to be over a year ago now, to allow the city to use that fund to plant trees on public lands. And so we now have used some of that money to plant trees on medians, to plant trees on some of the city streets. You've, you've seen, we did use a certain portion of it to go towards the tree removal on the golf course, but that's not a blank check to the golf course that we're going to do all their tree work. The contract still requires them to do their own tree work. But we can use that fund and have used that fund for about a year now on public lands. But, okay. Vice Mayor?
One additional comment. Make sure that Joe Ferris is involved with all this, because we plant trees, we're on place in 25 years, we're going to have torn up sidewalks, and we're going to have to come back and remediate the sidewalks like we have with some of these older oaks. And that's just, people get hurt when they trip and fall, and we want to alleviate that, so, that's, yeah, work it that way. So he's involved.
Okay. So, councilmembers, I, I don't think this requires formal action. Is there any objection to the city staff re-energizing the, the tree program and letting people know more? And any objections to this?
Not at all.
I think that fills the request, does it? Okay. Any other new business, board reports? I do have one item, and it pertains to the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee as well. I need to, I'd like to ask the council to consider something. You don't have to answer. I don't like to drop something on you and ask you for an answer in 30 seconds. But I will ask you for your, some feedback on this at our next meeting, because I would like to go to the Bicycle Pedestrian Meeting that same week, right after our meeting, and ask them to do something, but I want, I need your permission to ask them. So as you know, we've been working for quite some time with... So as you know, we've been working for quite some time with DOT and Hillsborough County on the upcoming renovations to both Fowler Avenue, 56th Street, and hopefully at some point Bullard and Temple Terrace, although that's a county road, and I don't know when that's gonna ever happen. But we are making great strides with their plans to enhance the walkability and bikeability of those streets. There will be a 12-foot wide paved multipurpose path that will connect Temple Terrace to USF, to Uptown, and go east and connect to a future trail that will go along the bypass canal that Hillsborough County is going to build. 56th Street is under study now. The study's not complete, but one of the large emphasis on that is to make it more bicycle pedestrian friendly. And so what I would like to do is ask the BPAC to take a look at this idea, and the idea that I'd like to ask them to look at is to, along with our staff, to look at our city streets and establish bike paths. Now, this probably wouldn't be any new construction, other than designating maybe with green lanes or something, wouldn't really be building anything, but it would be a preferred path so that if you lived down near River Hills or Scout Park and you got on the Greenway, you, you wouldn't have to have a map of the city to know, and you wouldn't have to ride out to the main roads in order to get to the library either. You could get on the Greenway, and the Greenway, or whatever we would call it, I don't know, the, the Greenway on city streets would connect the public areas of our city, our parks, the library, the downtown, the rec center, Lightfoot, right, those types of facilities. And once you're on that Greenway, it would take you through city streets to get to these various places, and it would also bring you out of the neighborhoods and align with established crossings on the main roads, on 56th Street, on Fowler, on Bullard, so that the Greenway, or whatever we would call it, would take you through the neighborhoods and line you up to get across Bullard to go to the library, or line you up to get across 56th Street to come to City Hall. And so I've talked conceptually to DOT about this, and they said, well, if you ever get to doing that, we could probably hook you up with the paint to do the, you know, the Greenways. We would probably cover that expense. Now, this is conceptual to some extent, but once they do the renovations on Fowler Avenue, which is in fiscal year '27, which begins in summer of '26, once they do that, if we don't have this in, in line, they're gonna put their crossings where they're gonna put them, and then our stuff's not gonna line up with their stuff. So the timing for this is really perfect, because they're still in the planning stages for Fowler and 56th, and they won't do this again for 25, 30 years probably before they do it again. So the timing is really good, and I'd like to ask the BPAC to take a look at this. USF has offered their assistance. DOT has offered the assistance of their engineers also, so it's not just, hey, you guys get a map and take a green pen and see what you think. I mean, there's some, there's help available. Everybody at USF and at DOT is kind of excited about this concept. But obviously, I can't give the BPAC this project if the council doesn't think it's worthwhile. So I'm not asking you to decide that right now, giving you a couple of weeks to think about it, but if you have comments or suggestions now, I'd be happy to take them. Yes, Councilmember Abel?
Well, I only need 30 seconds to decide about this. I think it's a great idea, but, and you said there's resources available, but I was wondering about that in particular, like what, what would they need to be able to work that out besides the, the sources that you mentioned? Because like you said, you know, they can't just have a map and a highlighter. What do you envision for how they could, how they could do this process?
Well, the DOT's got people that this is what they do for a living, so I don't, I mean, I'm, I'm not an expert in this, but I assume it probably has to do with roadway width and volume of traffic along that road, whether that's a good route or not. Another issue that could be looked at in conjunction with this is, we have a bike lane on River Hills, which is good, I'm not suggesting we do away with it, but you can't, you have no street parking legally when there's a bike lane. So everybody who lives on River Hills, when they park in front of the street and they have their Christmas parties, it's all illegal. They can't park in a bike lane. These are the things that people smarter than me need to help them kind of sort through and say, well, this isn't a great place to put a bike lane because you have school buses or you have, you know, whatever. So I don't know. I, I do think our utilities, our engineer would need to be plugged in to some extent, but we can't monopolize his time completely either, so.
So is there a way we could link in the people who could help to one of the Bicycle Pedestrian Safety Committee meetings and have them come in?
Well, with your permission, I'd like to give this task to the BPAC. I talked to the city manager about that. If we, in fact, do that, of course, city staff is willing to plug in to help them to get, you know, DOT's told us, call, and we'll have somebody plug in, and Cutter at USF is willing to also. So we're not gonna leave them high and dry to figure this out. I mean, we would help them.
Okay, yeah, sounds great.
Councilmember Chambers?
I, I also don't need another meeting. I think we should ask them to do it. If they choose to think it's too big for them, they can say no.
Well, we'll wait till next meeting anyway, because the public might have something to say at the beginning of next meeting, too, and I'm not gonna see them until after the next meeting.
Okay.
Councilmember Fernandez?
No, my, my only, I'm very interested in exploring it. So my only request would be, before anything actually becomes final, that obviously the public has a chance to see it and look at it and...
Oh, yeah, this is, what they would do is prepare some options for us to consider at a future date, yeah. Okay, thank you, council. Okay, other new business before we move on to the vice mayor selection? Okay, selection of a vice mayor. Says I'm supposed to explain that the vice mayor position is filled on a progressive rotation by seniority. Council members who have served a minimum of two years are eligible to serve as vice mayor. In the absence of the vice mayor, the vice mayor shall take the chair at the appointed meeting hour and immediately call the members to order. Pursuant to Rule 6 of Council Rules and Orders of Procedure, council members should elect a vice mayor for a one-year term. Council members who are eligible to serve as vice mayor at this time are council members Abels, Abel, Chambers, and Schistler. I do want to point out a couple of things before you move on this item. I don't plan on going anywhere, but the last two vice mayors have wound up being the mayor for a while, so I, I don't plan on going anywhere, but I don't think they probably did either. And so this is probably something, when I took it, I thought, oh, this is an honorary thing, I might get to cut a ribbon on somebody's business or something once in a while, and the next thing you know, I'm in the middle of a pandemic. So I would ask whoever is nominated to think that be, take it seriously, because you don't know what the future's gonna bring. The other thing is, I do know that I am going to be on vacation for the second meeting in July, so if you have a trip to Italy planned in July, we're gonna have to work around that if you are chosen as the vice mayor. And other than that, I would be proud to serve with any one of you. Vice Mayor?
Nominate, Councilmember Chambers?
I'd like to, I'd second that.
Are you willing to accept the nomination?
Yes, sir.
Okay, are there other nominations? Other nominations? If not, I will close the nominations. All right, we have one nomination for Councilmember Chambers. Is there a motion?
I move to, move to approve Councilman Chambers as the vice mayor.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays? Congratulations. All right, city manager, oh, I'm sorry, any other new business, board reports? Okay, city managers report.
Thank you, Your Honor. First thing, just because you mentioned July, July 4th is actually the first Tuesday of the month, so we will have to discuss an alternative for that date. Don't have to make that decision today. I'll have to, I'll get with Cheryl in terms of figuring out some options for you. In terms of business, I would ask Mr. Langfield to come up to the podium. I want to address the issue that Mr. and Mrs. Smalley raised, and Carl is our expert in this matter with this particular project, and also can update us on where we are with the, the trail.
Good evening.
Good evening, Carl.
Members of council. The project to develop the off-road bicycle trails at Riverfront Preserve has been a, a long project that started back on April 6th of 2021, when the Swamp Group came and made a presentation to city council to discuss the, the potential of developing those bicycle trails out at that location. That evening, staff were given the direction to move forward with looking at the development of an agreement to develop those plans. The first step in putting that plan together was to work with DEP and the Florida Communities' Trust, which manages the oversight of that property, to see if off-road bicycle usage and trails would be an acceptable usage of that property. An amendment to the agreement that we have with FCT was completed and approved by FCT to permit the development of off-road bicycle trails at that property. On October, or excuse me, on October 5th of 2021, staff brought forward to city council an agreement that had been reached between the city and the Swamp Mountain Bike Group to develop the trails at that location. And we began work with the Swamp Club to develop the trails at that site. In March of 2022, we came back before council to discuss the trail layout and how things would actually look once the trails were done, how the hiking trails and the biking trails would be separated during the construction portion and, and once the, the trails were finished. We got final direction from city council on how you would have, how you wanted us to proceed, and then through the summer and fall, Natural Trail Building, which was the firm hired by Swamp, has gone about building and constructing and developing the trails at the location, as well as making improvements to the hiking trails at the location. That process is coming to completion. My initial purpose in coming to you tonight was to invite you all to an opening ceremony, which we are planning for January the 14th, which is a week from Saturday. If you have any questions about the trails or the development of the bike trails, I'd be happy to entertain those questions at that time. I also have additional information about how that opening ceremony is going to go and who's gonna be present and times and things like that. I have that information as well, so I stand for any questions you all may have, or I can provide you the information about the opening ceremony that we are planning for that.
It might be best if you send that to us in an email, so we have the times and all that.
Yes, sir.
Councilmembers, any questions? Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes, so, oh, the pictures, when I, I have some pictures that people have sent, in fact, I'll, it's a lot of pictures, so they, they wouldn't go through, but I'm gonna share them with the city manager. So to go back, to go back to the beginning, my recollection of the preserve is that it was basically passive recreation, and that it was basically, it was supposed to be very quiet because of its proximity to the neighborhood and not a lot of parking, and so that's one question I have, is how does this use fit in with what I remember was the requirement for the preserve when it was established?
The, the initial version of the agreement with Florida Communities' Trust provides for adequate and appropriately located recreational facilities and open spaces concurrent with demand, and to provide and maintain diverse parks, recreation, facilities, and activities of a high quality for all residents. So that was part of the original management plan from FCT. That plan, and, and the plan included a lot of the things that were, that were set for that site, which included the shelter. At one point was the observation tower, if you remember way back into the history, we were gonna build the, the bat tower out there at that location. Also included the hiking trails at that site, included the, the parking and the access road at that site. What was added to the agreement last June was the development of off-road bicycle trails to that site. The bicycle trails on FCT properties is not unique to Riverfront Preserve. These, these types of usage occur on FCT properties throughout the state.
Well, so I, I go to a lot of state parks, and when I look at these pictures, and I see a lot of bicycles in, in the state parks on the trails, but the trails are, it's, they're not, they don't have obstacles, they, they're just flat trails that, that someone can ride their bicycle on versus walk. And when I look at some of these pictures, my, I guess my concern is that they're look to be swales and things that are, I guess bumps, that, so it looks like the terrain has been changed to make it a little more like a BMX track versus a more passive bicycle track.
In, in my continued education of off-road bicycling, which is, there's been a lot of over the past year, as off-road bicycle trails are developed, they are often developed with a philosophy called flow, where a, an individual on a bicycle can negotiate a course in a manner that, flow is the best word for it, where there's a rhythm to the ride, where there's, it, it's not strictly just pedaling a bike down a path, that, that there's a flow to it, that there's, there's engagement between the rider and the terrain that they're on. And this was all done, and, and the, the name of the, the firm that, that constructs it was, is Natural Trail Building, and they live up to that term where everything that is used to develop the trails is all natural, they don't use any heavy equipment to build anything, it is built entirely out of resources that are currently in the preserve, they didn't bring any materials in, they don't bring anything from the outside in to build these things. It is all natural surface, natural environment, natural to that location, there's no foreign materials brought in to develop any of these trails.
So the question I have, this seems like a little bit less passive of a bicycle trail, and the concern is that you have your pedestrians walking and, and hiking at a more, at a more sedate pace, and if we compare this to someone who's just bicycling on a path, that's a more flat path, that might be a more sedate pace also in this environment. This seems like it's a little more active, and it seems like it's in conflict with the people who are walking, and it seems like maybe this, at least according to people that are expressing concerns, that it's more prevalent than the space for the people who are walking.
Don't want to interrupt, but please allow me before you respond. I just want to make sure that we understand that the council has approved this over a year ago, and I don't want to go back to and start this public hearing process that we've all painfully went through a year ago. I don't want to start it again. So we've, we've been through this deconfliction, the types of trails that'll be constructed, was this approved by DEP, was this approved by the Florida Conservation Land Trust? All of this has been vetted publicly a, a year ago, so I don't want to stop you, you still have the floor, but I do, neither do I want to go back and, and do this all over again.
My, so my perspective and where I'm coming from is that what it seems like is what residents understood from that, those meetings to be. is what residents understood from that, those meetings to be, is residents are not, they're looking at this and saying, this isn't what I expected. So yes, everything was vetted and everything was discussed, but it seems in practice, the result has been that there are people that traditionally walk the space that feel more uncomfortable with the design than they expected.
When, one of the outcomes of these meetings was the separation of the hiking trails and the off-road bicycle trails. For, with the exception of a trail that runs on the southern edge of the property between the preserve and the new housing development that leads from the parking area to the pavilion, all of the hiking trails are to the eastern side of the property, and all of the biking trails are to the western side of the property. That was done to prevent conflict between people on bicycles and hikers. There are no shared trails for cyclists and hikers. There are no intersections between hiking trails and biking trails. There is signage up throughout the pavilion, or going up throughout the pavilion. I haven't been out there in a week or so to see, that designate which trails are hiking trails and which trails are biking trails to minimize the opportunity for conflicts between those on bikes and those hiking.
No, I'm good for right now.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Thanks for the update, Carl. Now, we had a lot of discussion over this the last year and a half. And I guess my big question is, are the Swamp people happy with the work that was done by the natural, whatever?
Natural, yes, sir. The last time I was out there, I was with the president of Swamp and the Natural Trail Building representatives.
Okay. I haven't been out there in the last month, six weeks, for other reasons. But the last time I was out there, there were huge trenches in the tracks. And you and I talked about it, and you said they were going to be taken care of. Are they taken care of? I mean, I go out there, but I didn't get out there before tonight.
When I was out there, it was just before Christmas. The things that you had seen, such as the tarps on the ground, are all gone. All that's gone. The bike trails were essentially ready to ride. They were putting finishing touches on the trails and getting signage in place for both the hiking trails and the biking trails. There was still some work. They had some issues. Because when we were out there, it was right after we had all that rain, and there were some issues with some spots where they had planned to put trails or thought they were going to be able to have a trail go through that was under a great deal of water, that they were looking at possibly diverting around some of those areas that were just too wet to put a bike trail through.
Then on the walk, the hiking trail, because that was, you know, we were going to extend the amount of walking area. What about the part that goes into the swamp? Is that a, did we just do that at a dry period where there was no standing water or when they walked it?
I would, when I walked the hiking trails right after they were developed, it was earlier in 2022, I don't remember the timeframe exactly. It was myself, representatives from Swamp, their environmental folks. There were individuals in the community walking with us as well. And we walked some of the existing trails, and then we walked a lot of the new trails. And I got lost. I'm not real good at this topography and map reading stuff. And I had the map that they had provided, and I had to stop on multiple occasions and go, okay, show me where we are on this map. Show me exactly where we are. And those folks are, they were very good at being able to designate what areas are prone to flooding and wet and what areas would remain hikeable and dry. And did their best to lay the trails out in such a manner as to not conflict with areas that would be, it would be wet during the rainy season.
Mr. Langfield, did they, the hiking trails that were constructed, did they vary from the original map? Are they less than what they were supposed to be? Or they're not as much? Did that change? Or is it?
It's possible that it varied. They did implement new hiking trails out there. They did build new hiking trails out there. I've walked some of them. I would have to go back and look at a map and verify line for line where everything is.
Because when I, I haven't hiked it since they began construction, but I did meet with a group of citizens, the whole row of houses that butts up against the preserve on the east side. I met with them here. And then later that week, I went out, invited them to come too, but they didn't go. And I walked it, and the Swamp folks had put their flags out at that point where all the new trails would be. And I walked. The trails weren't there, so it was a hike. It was chasing through some rough stuff. But I hiked all of where they had put the flags to see where the bike trail, where the walk trails. And if you recall, we clipped a piece of that hiking trail to put it a little further away from those homes. And actually, it was ample distance from the homes. There's one homeowner in particular that had intruded several hundred feet into the preserve with their backyard, which is the only reason the hiking trail was too close to their backyard, was their backyard was where it's not supposed to be. And so we clipped the trail on the very east end, where you see it go towards the east. We clipped that. And it probably would have been a net reduction of, I don't know, maybe 50, 100 feet at the most. It was, I can show it to you after the meeting if you want. I'll show you where we had to clip that. Okay, so the map you showed us at the beginning of the meeting is slightly different than what it was when they built. But my concern was, or my question, I guess, was other than that clip, they didn't move those trails again, did they? Or?
Not to my knowledge, no, certainly. Again, I can look at a map and I can stand in the park, and if you asked me to point on that map where I am, I wouldn't be able to do it. So we walked and I had to stop them, like I said, on multiple occasions, and say, okay, where on this map are we? Show me where we are on this new trail. Show me. You know, so we did that on multiple occasions as we walked that property to find out exactly.
I just want to reassure everybody that when the council approved it, we approved the certain plan. And if they substantially changed from that, I don't know if they did, but if they substantially changed from that plan, and we were supposed to get an additional 1,500 feet or whatever it was of new hiking trails, and we got 50, then we have an issue, and we also still have control of the property. It's not like we sold it. So we will make sure that we got what we approved, if it's different than what we approved. So I don't know. I haven't gone out there and walked it since they did the construction. I guess I'm going to walk it between now and the 14th. But if it, I don't know, you and I can go. We can all go. I don't care. But, well, we can't all go. We'd have to notice it. But we can go out there, because I'm pretty good in the woods. And if the map doesn't line up with what was built, then we just make them build it or we do whatever we have to do.
Who is your neighborhood contact?
With?
The neighborhood. One of our meetings, we talked about keeping communication open with the neighborhood.
The individual that I speak the most with who lives in that neighborhood is Mike Hakewood. Mike Hakewood.
Okay, well, if I could make a suggestion instead of us all going out there, which we'd have to notice. But before opening day, have Carl, the city manager, maybe representatives from the neighborhood to go out and address the concerns with the ditches or the, are they really pigs? Or are they other stuff to address all your concerns and get all that out of the way before that Saturday?
Yes, sir.
Just, I mean, that's a suggestion. I can't tell you what to do, but.
I'll go. I want to go anyway because we have citizens that have concerns. I want to make sure they built it according to what we approved. There's still going to be people who are unhappy with what we approved. But if they differed from what we approved, that's another story. That's a different.
You need a bike to go on the one set of trails. You need a bike to go over those. It's that hilly.
I got a bike too. I got a bike.
Yeah, okay.
I can do it. As long as I can get out there and walk and see what.
I will set something up with representatives from Swamp and the neighborhood and we'll.
Yep.
Okay. Councilmembers, anything else? So we'll go out there and take a look? Okay.
Look forward to opening ceremonies.
You still have it?
Thank you. That's actually all I have.
That's all you have? I think we're all kind of grateful. City Attorney?
We received a notification about 10 days ago from the Office of the Florida Attorney General. They had pursued a claim against multiple manufacturers of automotive parts for price fixing. The notification was that the action on behalf of the state included local governmental entities, and the case has now settled. They've recovered a sum of money, and they notified us that they were depositing $6,294.24 into our account, and that is our agency's share of these settlements, so.
Where will that money go?
You'll have to ask the finance director what he's going to do with it.
There's a reason I asked.
We have a settlement account in general fund where things of that nature, no one really knows.
And what do we buy out of that account?
It just goes into the general fund revenues. There's nothing specifically allocated unless someone wants to make a proposal.
Yes, some.
But there's nothing specifically.
Sometimes we are involved one way or another in litigation, and at the time of settlement, there's a designation that the monies are supposed to be used for something particular. It could be to reimburse people. It could be for some type of an education. In this particular case, they didn't tell us that we had to do anything in particular with the money. They just said, here's your money, so.
Okay.
In theory, you're in. It would just go to the general fund preserve.
City manager and I will talk and report back for your approval. Anything else? Pam, anything else?
That's all.
That's it? Okay. Are there other items to come before the council? Councilmembers, anything? Any other business? Directors, any other business? Okay, very good. We will see you at our next meeting in January then. Thank you. We're adjourned.